Welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. We do have a lengthy agenda as we get here towards the end of the year. And most of the things that we handle need two readings and we only have one more meeting after this. They fill up fairly quickly here as we go into the holiday season. And so hopefully we'll be done in time to get home for Thanksgiving. And so we'll get started here in just a second. We're going to open this evening by calling the meeting to order. Well, actually, we're going to call the public hearing to order first and then we will call the regular meeting to order after that. The public hearing is held in regards to ordinance number 30-2025. It's an ordinance authorizing the closure of a portion of a public road in the city of Greer, that being Park Avenue. This is a time where you can speak in regards to this issue. And so if you would, have we had any sign up? Are we going to do it by hand or by hand? Okay, that works for me. What I will do is ask if anyone would like to speak. Would you please raise your hand and then give me an idea of a number of people that may want to speak and then we will go from there. If I ask you to come forward, if you would, please come to the podium where the microphone is. And to open your remarks, please state your name and address if you would, please. I would ask that you try and keep your comments somewhere in the range of no longer than three minutes and we will go from there. So I call the public hearing to order to consider ordinance number 30-2025, the ordinance authorizing the close of a portion of a public road in the city of Greer. Having called the meeting to order, by show of hand, would anybody like to make comment in regards to ordinance number 30-2025? Yes, ma'am. If you'll come to the podium, please.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Kate DeVix. I own the residence at 134 Park Avenue and I'm here on behalf of the 12 homeowners of the Park Avenue townhomes that were built in 2021 and their HOA board, of which I'm the vice president. I must express surprise. I thought that the comments or the public hearing would be done later on in this proceeding. Are you asking for comment right now or just an indication?
This is the public hearing in regard to the road closure, so this will be the time for the public to address this issue. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, then I have to make comments without the benefit of hearing any reports or anything other than the reading of the ordinance. It was my understanding Mr. Grant from the engineering department would be here tonight and I didn't know if he would have anything to say about how that, the consequences that flow from the closure and anything that may be required of the developer in the process of the disclosure.
Okay.
Okay?
All righty.
Let me just speak briefly and say that from the beginning for Park Avenue, we were built out in 2021 and since the development along Park Avenue by TMG began, our concerns were for two things. The first one, Park Avenue, the traffic situation, the safety, and then our property value. And we have tried to, and we have worked with the developer. I have a good relationship with the project supervisor, Mr. McCarthy with TMG welcomed me to speak to him before the meeting here at city council on October 15. I had just traveled back from a week of babysitting grandchildren, but I met with him and I was able to show up. And I told you all that night that I was going to be watching to understand the process, understand what was involved and why it was suggested that Park Avenue be partially privatized, which would mean, according to what Mr. McCarthy related to me, that the road would be gated so the homeowners along Park Avenue would no longer be able to drive up to Moore Street and take a left on trade, which is the safest way to do that. As you know, you have Park, Palom, Daniel, and I think a Fourth Street that all come together. That can make that a dicey intersection. Any kind of left turn on line avenue to drive downtown is kind of dicey up there, too. But as time went on, we realized that while we were surprised to be told we might not be able to drive up Park Avenue, the biggest issue was just the safety issue because we have homeowners that have to back out during commuting hours and depending on the flow of traffic, they could be delayed in backing out or it would not be a safer situation. That said, I want to thank the members of the engineering department and CPW who have spoken to me over the last few weeks. It's my understanding that for the quandary that TMG is facing, the city has no choice, no other option to offer the developer except to consider whether or not it's right to privatize the road in part. The resolution, the ordinance says that you feel this is in the city's interest. The city's interest is not just the interest of one, but the interest of all, especially all who are currently living so close to that situation. As far as the gate, I hope to hear some discussion tonight about that. No language was included about the gate in the resolution. If we had not made an effort to communicate with TMG and to communicate with engineering and others in the city, we would not have known anything about it. And it is a really important issue. And I know that it is equally important for TMG because they had envisioned that their people would be able to drive up and down Park Avenue to come and go. They have other means of ingress and egress, for sure. But I would say that for us, driving out of driveways, some of us having to park on a street if we have two cars and a garage full of stuff because we thought we would be moving to a bigger house soon, but we're now kind of stuck there. That's not me, but there are others in that position. But if just 20 cars per hour came out of the apartments on either side of Park Avenue, that would be 40 cars per hour during the commute time in the morning or a car every minute and a half, and that would make it difficult for us. I most of all also want to thank TMG for listening to our concerns about parking and safety. We've both kept an open mind and a listening ear to each other's needs and so we just look to hear what the city is going to say and what questions you might have of us. I think I can speak on my behalf, too, in that regard if you have questions for us tonight and we can help you see the situation, not just from a written ordinance, but from the perspective of those most involved in the situation that will unfold. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I appreciate the time and attention that you have given to this matter and also to the developers for reaching out as well, too. This has been kind of a catch-22 for us and it wasn't anything that I don't know that we anticipated necessarily. And so your research and background on this has given you and the residents the information, hopefully, that you needed and looks like a little further along in the agenda as we get to that portion of it. We will engage in a much deeper conversation and we'll invite others to speak, Mr. Grant's here and some others. So appreciate your time in bringing that forward. Anyone else that would like to speak in regards to the ordinance 30-2025? If you'll indicate so by raising your hand. That is the second call for the third and final time. Would anybody like to speak to ordinance number 30-2025? If so, please raise your hand. No one indicates so. So with that, let me call our regular meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting held tonight, November 25, 2025. Having duly assembled, I'd like to call the meeting to order. With that, I would ask if you would to join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Join me in an invocation for council. Heavenly Father, I pray for the flourishing of our community spiritually, socially, and economically. May we work together to create a place where all are valued, where justice and righteousness prevail, and where the needs of the most vulnerable of our community are met. I thank you for the calling to leadership and pray for this council and all of those in our community that are in positions of leadership. I pray for those that lead, that you grant us wisdom, discernment, and humility. May we be guided through this meeting by your truth and love. Ms. Duncan, anybody to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, council, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting held on November the 11th of 2025. I'll entertain a motion to be received.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open. Is there anything of note that the clerk needs to be made aware of? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, departmental reports are included in your packet. You see that list as always. Administrator will be glad to help you with that and/or department heads. Mr. Klein joins us for our financial activity this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Financial performance summary for the month October 2025. Starting in the general fund, we had a cash balance of $11,728,000, year-to-date revenue of $3,696,000, year-to-date expenditures of $16,900,000. We are 2% under budget. We had an unfavorable revenue benchmark variance of $1,076,000, an unfavorable expenditure benchmark variance of $417,000, for an overall unfavorable benchmark variance of $1,493,000. Moving on to hospitality fund, we had a cash balance of $3,530,000, year-to-date revenues of $1,348,000, and year-to-date expenditures of $83,326. Finally, stormwater fund, we had a cash balance of $3,689,000, year-to-date revenues of $62,000, and year-to-date expenditures of $111,757. With that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Floor is open for discussion.
The negative positions that you stated, that's normal for this time of year in our collection cycle?
Yes, sir, especially on the revenue side. And then the expenditure side is going to fluctuate, but yes, sir.
Discussion? Thank you, sir. Council, you've got some information here in front of you in regards to the sesquicentennial This has been an ongoing effort for at least a year now. Lindsay Schaefer and her staff and a host of other staff members have been working diligently on planning for this celebration. And part of the trick of doing that has been that they committed to planning a year-long celebration to mark our sesquicentennial. And you're going to see from the packet that they have accomplished that. And this is going to be an upcoming year that is going to be jam-packed with special events, all different kinds of things going on downtown and in our parks and around town and hopefully maybe even some secret things we hadn't even planned on are now getting ready to pop up. So who knows what next year is going to look like, but I can tell you this, it is going to be busy and it is going to be centered around us celebrating 150 years of Greer SC. And so while she could tell us one thing at a time about all 365 events she's scheduled next year, we figured it might be best to put this in a packet form for you and let you digest it. Lindsay and her staff and certainly the administrator's staff and others will be glad to give you more information as you need it and we roll into 2026. With that, Ms. Schaefer, the floor is yours.
Thank you and good evening, mayor and council. It's been an honor to be part of this celebration and I'm so excited to share our plans for the 150th anniversary. On behalf of city staff and our partners at the Greer Heritage Museum who are in attendance with us tonight, thank you for your support in commemorating this milestone year. As the mayor mentioned, we have a lot in store, so I'm going to try and keep it as brief as possible. You have detailed information in your packet. 2026 is going to be a year-long celebration that brings together our diverse community, honors our past, and inspires a shared vision for the next 150 years of Greer. Throughout the year, we will tell the story of Greer through interviews, art, storytelling, events, and educational and engaging social media content. And as we thought about the Greer 150 branding and what it would look like, we decided to invite the community to take part in a special way. We did a call for branding submissions, formed a selection committee, and ultimately selected Scott Prather, who is a Greer resident. Scott's passion for this project was inspiring and his designs connect Greer's rich history to present day. And they also work well in a variety of formats, so print and digital formats, which is very important for this next year, as you will see this branding all over the city. Our partners and friends at the museum, they have been working diligently to update exhibits, plan monthly events for next year, select Greer 150 merchandise, answer my thousand history questions, and much more. The city will as well host new events as in addition, we will incorporate the Greer 150 into our annual events. Please mark your calendars for the kickoff event on January 3rd at the museum. We'll have a formal ceremony on the actual charter day of March 25th and then the big celebration on March 28th. And you'll see in your packet, there are many more events as well and we'll have some more information for you as we head into the new year. Our communications department worked really hard on designing a webpage within the city website. We felt that it was very important for us to have a hub, just an easy point of access for people to see information, get resources, and find out how they can get involved in this milestone year. And to better engage the businesses and organizations within our community, the museum has created a downloadable PDF of a prep guide just showing different ways that they can prepare for and participate in the Greer 150. So we encourage you to check out the website. We will continue to add events and information as our plans solidify. And if you have suggestions for people that we can partner with or people that we can interview just to share their story, whether they have been in Greer their whole life or they just moved here in the past year, we want to share as many stories as possible. We greatly appreciate your support and our contact information is in your packet. So if you have any questions, please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any quick questions or discussion? We've got Lindsay at the microphone.
Which logo did you say you went with?
So the logo is on, the primary logo I think is slide four. It is the one where it has Greer SC and the 150 with the city hall. And then on the other page, you'll see the logo variations. That's really important for us as we are marketing events. There's going to be certain cases where there's a different logo variation that will be important to use, but they all provide consistent branding. So no matter which logo we use, you'll be able to tell that it is for the 150.
And I would be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to the folks from the museum as well, too. This is, as I mentioned, a yeoman's task and much of what you see here was accomplished by staff and by the folks from the museum who have helped us all along with this and will be an integral part of leading this effort forward and we appreciate your help as well. I know we will be leaning heavily on y'all and we will hopefully be able to give a little sneak peek maybe at our Christmas celebration to help kick things off as we move into 2026 and celebrate 150 years of Greer. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayorman, your report, please, sir.
Well, I think the sesquicentennial year is going to be not unlike the final month of the year in Greer as far as activities go. If you'll bear with me, I'm going to go through real quick. A lot of the things are going on this final month of the year. Just by way of reminder, city offices will be closed on the 27th and 28th in observation of Thanksgiving holiday. The Greer Station Holiday Passport is returning for a second year. This is an opportunity to shop local, collect stamps, and be entered when a gift card package is to downtown businesses. Shopping dates are November 28th to December 14th. So please go to discovergreer.com to learn more about the Holiday Passport. The Christmas tree lighting, something that is near and dear to this community, is on Friday, December 5th in City Park from 5:00 to 8:00. Holiday craft stations, trackless train rides, roaming carolers, live music will all be available. Guests can enjoy ice sculpture demonstration, food vendors, and seasonal favorites like smores and hot chocolate, which will be provided by Greer Relief. And of course, the evening concludes with a special appearance by the Claus family who joined Mayor Danner to light the city's Christmas tree. The Greer Holiday Farmers Market will be, let's see, December 7th from 10:00 to 2:00 here in City Park. And speaking of Greer Relief, the Christmas parade is on the 7th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 downtown. The theme for this year's Christmas parade is the 12 Days of Christmas. The parade begins at Point Set in Memorial and ends at North Main in Cunningham. And then finally, something that our folks in our Center for the Arts are very proud of is the gingerbread jamboree. It is a creative opportunity for gingerbread house competition. We'll have submissions from adults, students, families, and teams. You can view the gingerbread houses from December 6th to the 16th during the regular gallery hours. The competition will be Tuesday, December 9th from 6:00 to 8:00. Mr. Mayor, council, that concludes my report.
Make me a note about the gingerbread houses. That's always a fun event. Thank you, sir. With that, council, let's move to old business. Number of items to address here. The first will be the second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2025, an ordinance amending the business license ordinance of the city of Greer to update the class schedule as required by Act 176 of 2020. Mr. Klein joins us for that discussion. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, mayor and council. There were no updates nor changes made from the first reading of this ordinance, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Second item for us is the second reading of ordinance number 26-2025. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by CNS Property LLC located at 1455 West Wade Hampton Boulevard by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of commercial corridor for said property. Ms. Cotty joins us for that. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. My only update is that Planning Commission held a public hearing last Monday evening and recommended approval.
Second reading of ordinance number 26-2025 comes with recommendation for approval. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the third item. It's the second reading of ordinance number 27-2025. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of certain properties owned by AGWG 3085 Holdings LLC located at 3019 South Highway 14 and 3021 South Highway 14, 3035 South Highway 14 by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of commercial corridor for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. Planning Commission held a public hearing last Monday evening and recommended approval.
This comes with an approval. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Floor is open. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to second reading of ordinance number 28-2025. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Highway 14 Cars LLC located at 3085 South Highway 14 by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of commercial corridor for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Planning Commission held a public hearing and also recommended approval last Monday
Ordinance number 28-25 comes with a recommendation of approval. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just note again my comments from last meeting. Really excited for you guys and I think what you have planned is really neat. It's going to be a great fit there and I'm especially excited it's going to be in District 3. So thank you for coming to us and doing what you're doing.
Others? Comments? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the second reading of ordinance number 29-2025. This is an ordinance to the city of Greer, South Carolina, to adopt the Greer Comprehensive Plan Five-Year Update, consistent with the requirements of South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act of 1994. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you. I don't have any updates on this case, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, I was just kidding you all about not being home for Thanksgiving. We just... We beat all those to death first reading.
You scared us talking about a two-day-long meeting.
Let's move to items of new business this evening, the first of which is award recommendation for project number 26-008. This is the Stevens Field Wall Replacement. Ms. Camo joins us this evening to review the bids and make a recommendation in regards to the award. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council and Mayor. This solicitation went through, and we received six bids on November 12th. The wall sustained substantial damage from Hurricane Helene and is part of the list of projects that we've submitted for FEMA reimbursement. The team evaluated all six bids and is recommending award to Foothills Construction for both the base bid and the alternate bids. So that would be all three walls. I'm here for any questions.
Council, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. The floor is now open.
What is the difference in the base and the alternate bid here?
The base bid only covers the back wall. The alternate bid, we separated the alternate bid covers the two side walls. There's been discussion back and forth with FEMA and wanting to make sure that we had what was more damaged covered and potentially a higher potential for reimbursement. So that's why we separated the walls into two alternates. But in more discussion with FEMA, it looks like we are able to submit all three for reimbursement.
So we're only going to be reimbursed the base?
No, it's looking like we'll be reimbursed for all three.
Others?
Is part of the reason why it's taken us, I guess, 14 months on this interfacing with FEMA and that whole process? Or just curious on?
There is a lengthy process with the term, doing the infill inspections, having FEMA obtain initial information, also having conversations with our mitigation team and seeing if it will be covered through a regular reimbursement or if we will need to use mitigation dollars as well. And so that's been a lengthy process in addition to having to obtain consultant services to do an initial investigation and what can potentially be the best outcome and what we could do for the wall. But the project team is here if you have more questions on that part.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Others?
This is for masonry wall replacement?
Correct.
What is the reason we went with not the lowest bid?
Several reasons, and I'll invite the project manager, John Goglenauer, to join. But as you can see, the lowest bidder was 50% lower than the next second and third, which was a substantial difference. And so the team wanted to ensure that they understood the scope and that they could potentially do the work. In addition to that, there was also a review on the proposed project schedule as well as contact team references. And ultimately, the decision was that Foothills would be the better option.
References made a difference?
Yes, sir.
How are they going to check the stability with the remaining wall?
I will ask John to answer that.
I'm sorry, I need you to answer.
Come on up here.
Yeah, if you'll come to the podium, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
How are they going to check the stability of the wall that's remaining?
The wall that's there, it's not reinforced in any shape, form, or manner. This new wall will have bond beams. It's going to be a substantial upgrade into the modern age. The original wall was built in 1938 or thereabout. It was probably done by local volunteers. So it was, although it stood the test of time until now, as we can see, one good gust of wind took it down because there's no reinforcement. So this is a substantial upgrade from that.
So there's going to be some type of beams or posts that are going to be put back and somehow attached to the wall?
It'll be concrete reinforced. So yes, you'll have a bond beam that goes horizontal and concrete actually filling at certain intervals down through the CMU wall itself. That provides stability all the way around and doesn't allow any of the CMU block to shift or move or crack. If it does, you've got that concrete reinforcement throughout the entire structure. And at the base, you'll have it attached to the foundation. So it should last as long as we need it to.
That's not just in the repair section, though. Are you going to do that all the way around?
All the way, yes. Now that we're able to secure funding for the entire, all the way to... This facility had some renovations done not too awful long ago. That portion's already reinforced good. This is going to carry all that old CMU that existed that wasn't picked up in that first renovation and tie it back to the new.
That's great.
Newer stuff.
Good. John, you reminded me, this was just damage sustained from winds?
It was. They took out that one corner of the back wall and took it down. And then there was substantial cracking all down through that backside.
But that wall's really, the right center field's really high.
Yes, yeah. It's right around 12 foot.
Yeah, it would not be built like that today.
No. It's, we're going to have, it's engineered now.
Thank you, sir. Others? Questions? Comments? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank y'all.
As Mr. Grant makes his way forward, this is the discussion regarding the City of Greer 2026 paving list. Mr. Grant, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have lists for the Spartanburg side and one list for the Greenville side of the city. I'd like to start with the Greenville list. I would note that the tan-colored column is the pavement condition index. That is the condition score we got from an evaluation of all our streets we had completed in 2024. This score helps us rank and prioritize our streets for maintenance. Depending on the next year's asphalt prices, we plan to fund the milling and overlay of these streets totaling about 1.3 miles. The total paving budget for the Greenville side is just over 906,000. And you can see there the split between the city and the GLDTC in the green area. Are there any questions on the Greenville list?
I have one.
Okay.
My street is listed on there, and I appreciate that. But I would just caution you that the upper portion of that suffers from the spring that's underneath that part of Greer, and that's what causes the problems. I don't know if that will be addressed or not when they resurface it.
Up at the intersection of, I don't know, that...
Right where it comes off of Wood Avenue.
I think it's Park Street or something? At the top of the hill?
Yep, yep. It tends to crumble on the side. And that's clearly from the spring because after a heavy rain, when I first moved there, the rain had been done for three or four days, and we still had water coming down the curb. I called CPW and said, y'all got a water leak somewhere. And they came out there and looked at it, and it was just flowing out of the curb from the spring.
Really?
Yep.
Interesting. We may need to admit out there, and you show me pointing where that hole was. I'd like to take a look.
I'll do it. Don't plug it. It might come up in my house or something.
Any other questions?
I was going to bring up St. James Place. I know that they have had issues and concerns out there for the last, I don't know, three years or so. And I know we went out and did some filling in the...
Crack seal?
Cracks, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Crack sealing and all that. I guess when I saw the St. James Place, that one little road, which is about a block long, I was kind of surprised that that was the only thing that was going to be addressed in there.
It's 700 feet.
Short street.
No, it's 700 feet. That's the whole, that's the whole street.
Yeah.
And it's the worst street in the neighborhood. So we're going by the PCI score. You know, it has to be below a 50. So I think most of the other streets in there are above 50, if I'm not mistaken.
I guess that's going in from the entrance all the way down to Medora.
All the way. Yes, ma'am. 700 feet.
They've had several concerns, you know, regarding... But of course, we've had several other subdivisions. And I thought I was going to see a couple of the cul-de-sacs in Rushmore Meadows on there, on this list. Thought that was to come up in '26. I know I had mentioned them. Several of the cul-de-sacs. Cul-de-sacs apparently are real bad about getting big cracks in the road for some reason.
I think they're probably above the 50 score, which is what we kind of, that's kind of our benchmark if we're going to pave. It has to be below 50. And if you know which specific streets, I can give you the score for each one of those streets. But they typically don't make this list until they get below 50.
Well, they probably need to fill up the cracks again.
Well, yeah, we, yeah. Actually, we are going to do some, I was going to mention that later. We do have some preservation efforts coming next year in 2026, but I'll be bringing that to you in the spring. So, and we've already been in there.
Okay.
We've already been in there looking, yes, ma'am.
I'm in the neighborhood.
I've already, I've already been in there. Yes, ma'am. We've more to come in the spring.
All right.
Others? Questions?
Can I go to Spartanburg County?
Yeah, we're going to do Spartanburg. I just want to see if there are any questions on the Greenville list before moving on. Because of Spartanburg, it's, things are a little different. So this might take a minute. So just bear with me. So due to COVID-related price increases, there was no paving on the Spartanburg side of the city in 2022, 2023, or 2024. In 2024, the Spartanburg County implemented a penny tax, which I have a slide here that's not in your packet, but it's here on the big screen. From the penny tax, Greer is going to be allocated, or was allocated, 500,000 in 2025, and then in 2027, an initial 558,000. So our 2022, our 2023, and our 2024 lists from Spartanburg were all paved this past spring. So we're catching up. The 2025 list was part of the penny tax, which you see here in your packet. That's the streets highlighted in yellow. So they were on the 2025 list from last year, and they were all paved as part of the penny tax. They were paved this past September and October, just a couple months ago. That project came in under budget. So about two weeks ago, I was contacted by Spartanburg County that they wanted to add more streets to the contract. So the streets you see highlighted in purple were going to be on our 2026 list, but we moved them up to 2025 since they requested extra streets. And sidebar, the two sections of King Street were paved last week. And I think Burns may already be paved. If not, it'll be this week or next week. So essentially, the 2022 through 2026 lists were all paved this year on two contracts on the Spartanburg side. The next list we submit for Spartanburg will be in 2027, not 2026. So all of our 26 streets are actually already on the list and paved. So I know that was a lot, and it was a little confusing, but that's just the way it was working out in Spartanburg side of the city right now. So are there any questions on the Spartanburg list or status? Like I said, we're called up. 2022 through 2026 are all paved this year. So we're in good shape.
It's all District 2, man. Call foul.
All right.
I thought roads weren't supposed to be political.
If there's no other questions on that, then I'm going to just, mainly what I'm talking about is Greenville right now. So look at the Greenville list. So these, so the funds shown there for the 906,000 are budgeted in the current paving budget. All these costs are estimated. And once bids are received and the actual asphalt costs will determine how many streets we can pave next year. So we may actually add one or two streets or take off one or two streets, depending on asphalt prices. As I was mentioning, Ms. Albert, we do have some pavement preservation projects planned for 2026, and we'll be coming to you in January or February with details on that. So that's all I have now, all I have for now regarding paving. And so we're seeking council approval to move forward with the 2026 paving.
Thank you, sir. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Floor is open.
Just kind of going back to the paving, I just wanted to point out the stark differences between Greenville County, who didn't pass the 1%, the penny allocation, and Spartanburg, where we had roads that were paved a year in advance. Is that basically what you're saying? We had funding there to accelerate some of these infrastructure improvements?
Yes, sir. The 2025 contract that they let came in under budget. So they said, hey, we got a little more money under the Greer column if you can give us some extra streets. So those three in purple kind of fit what money was left.
But you said they didn't do several years.
Correct. There was no paving on the Spartanburg side for 2022, 23, or 24.
They didn't quit collecting taxes, did they?
Say again?
They didn't quit collecting taxes during those years, did they?
I guess not. They were just pulling the money and spending a lot of it this year, obviously.
Lee, you're right. There was a lot of District 2 roads in there. So thank you.
That's a good observation.
I mean, I drive to Spartanburg most days, and those roads are, just about every road I go, major thoroughfare is torn up right now. So that penny tax is being stretched and going a long way in Spartanburg County.
Yeah.
You say it because of COVID pricing?
Yes, sir. That was the reason it all got delayed. Greenville actually delayed in 2021 or 2022, I think. Yeah, the prices are so high for asphalt. Everybody just said, we're pumping the brakes. We're going to wait a year, and hopefully things will get better. And they, it was, you know, it was a slow process.
Others?
I'd been told about Burns being paved. I'd heard that was happening. That 20-feet width, is that the width? Are all those the width that they were before?
Are all those the width that they were before?
That one was actually widened when those subdivisions were built.
That's what I was hoping.
Yeah. It was 16 feet at one time, and that's 20, which is, that's the bare minimum we can, we'd really want to have, you know, serving.
That's good to hear. I think that was needed, for sure.
Others?
Thank you, sir. Got a motion and a second on the floor. Any final thoughts in regards to the paving list?
Got a question for Andy on the, just looking at the slide for the penny allocation. You know, you're looking at Spartanburg, that's got 7.3 million, and we're at 1 million. Is there any way we could pitch? Because if you look at population, land mass size, infrastructure, network, like how are they divvying these numbers up?
There's another slide that was connected to that one. I'd be glad to send it to you that shows how they came up with the formula. I'd be glad to send that to you.
Okay. So after you review the formula, if you had any other questions, we can talk about it. But I think that is an important component of this. It was formulaic.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the first and final reading of Resolution 22, 2025. This is a resolution to amend the City of Greer holiday schedule as outlined in the City of Greer Policies and Procedures Manual. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. As we continue to work towards being an employer of choice in, in the upstate and attracting the, the best and brightest, we, we look at all options. And this council is, has always been, made it a high priority to compensate at the highest level possible and to provide the highest level of benefits to our employees. And it is not lost on, on us that this council has been committed to that for a number of years. As we look at the holiday schedule compared to the counties plural that we sit in, as well as the municipalities, not just in Greenville County and Spartanburg County, but in the region, we are behind in the number of set holidays by three. What I am requesting of this council is to consider the addition of one set holiday, which would be President's Day, and then two, what we're going to call floating holidays. These would just be personal days that an employee could use to celebrate any holiday that is important to them, or just to use as general leave. This would put us on the same level of most of the cities and still behind one in the upstate that we use as a basis for comparison.
Comes with the recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second.
Second.
Floor's open.
Mr. Merriman, how do we get behind the counties and these municipalities?
I don't know that it was a behind, from the perspective of being intentional. I think it was just something that just happened. I think counties and cities have added days here and there over the last few years. We looked at President's Day as a set fixed bank holiday. It does provide a holiday in the, that late winter, early spring time period. But as far as the city getting behind, it just kind of happened. I don't know that it was intentional on anybody's part, unintentional on anybody's part, but that's just where we are.
Other than President's Day, what other holidays would there be to celebrate?
I do believe some of the folks on this list have got Good Friday as a day.
We don't do Good Friday?
No, sir, we do not. And I think some of them have added Juneteenth as a holiday. I wish, I don't see, Alicia was in here, but those would be two examples that spring immediately to mind as, as holidays that other municipalities or counties would have recognized as closure days. By just adding President's Day, we are only, we would only close City Hall and City offices for one day.
You're saying you're going to come back and ask for the other two later, is what you're saying?
The other two would be a part of this. It would just be part of the entire package. But what I'm asking you all to do is add President's Day as a set fixed holiday, and then the other two additional days would put us at 13 that the employee can use at their discretion.
Others?
Loaded.
That would put us more than federal and state at that point, I believe.
Right now, we are at, I mean, I can, I can verify the, the federal and state, because that was on a different 13. I had that number pulled up, pardon me. Play leave schedule. Yeah, South Carolina's holidays at 13.
What additional holidays do they have?
South Carolina recognizes New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, George Washington, or President's Day, Confederate Memorial Day, National Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and the 26th of December, the day after Christmas. So they're at 13.
So you're counting those as two separate days, Christmas and the day after?
24th, 25th, and the 26th are different, are all state holidays.
In that no one is showing up at the office for work?
That's right. Those, those days are closed. Those offices.
Do we get the day after Christmas?
We do not, no, sir.
That would make more sense.
Well, that's why we would do the floating holiday. And then if you wanted to.
Do we have floating holidays now?
We would just call it, we don't have them. We just have personal annual leave days that would be part of your vacation package.
So to, to take advantage of them, you would have to be on a holiday?
You just see how you take it down as part of your annual leave, yes.
No, you could use it for your birthday if you wanted to.
Yeah, you use it for your birthday, yeah.
So that would be a personal day?
Yeah, it's a personal fact.
How many personal days do we get now?
Right now, we are, general leave is at two weeks for a new employee, five, 10 days? We start, we started 10 days, is that right, Mike? 10 days, we started? And one personal, excuse me, yes, we have one personal day, and then two weeks of annual leave.
Plus holidays.
Plus holidays, yes, sir.
Wow, that's generous.
It's not dissimilar to banking holidays. For a new employee, yes, sir. But that is, that's become industry standard.
Hey, I'll ask you my standard question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tightwok. What does one day of productivity cost us in salary and benefits?
Salary, total paid by the city for one holiday, one holiday, which includes FICA, includes retirement, all in, $66,000.
That's more than that. More than my calculation.
$66,560 is what we've got. $66,530.
Well, I beg to disagree, because I added up salary and benefits from last year's budget and divided it out, and it came to significantly more than that.
Well, I'd love to see your methodology, but yes, that is, that is, that's the number that we worked out through HR and finance.
How many employees do we have now?
Right now, we have budgeted 415, 412. I think we actually have probably 380-ish on the payroll.
Well, I remember asking the same question when we debated Martin Luther King, and David Seifert gave me, finally, after I prodded him, gave me the answer, $28,000 a day. I know it's gone up more than to 66 in that day.
Well, we can refine those numbers, but that was the number that I've got.
Well, if you, if you consider that our, our benefits and salary are 57% of our budget, something like that, which is misleading because of the revenue, I think if you take, take that figure there, the 20, the, the 57%, take that much of your budget and, and divide it out, I did 365 days, I took 260, I did 250, comes out more than that. Now, I'm, I'm not going to argue the fact with you right now.
No, no, no.
You can look at it later.
We can look at it later.
But that's straight off our budget. That's where I got those numbers.
Okay. I will verify.
Okay.
Floor's still open. Questions?
Mr. Merriman, have we gotten, have we gotten any feedback from employees? Like, why don't we have the same amount of holidays as other entities and that type of thing? Or just a matter of we're trying to be proactive and?
I think a little bit of both. You know, there's been some questions and observations that, you know, so-and-so works for such and such, and they get such and such a day off, or they get a total number of days off that's different than ours. So, yeah, it's just been a matter of, one, we've heard about it, but two, we're constantly probing for where we can strengthen our recruitment and retention. I think in a, in a marketplace like ours, I think that's important.
I would just say, I appreciate Mr. Bettis bringing forward that, you know, there's, there's a cost to adding a holiday like this, for sure.
Absolutely, yeah.
That way. So I think our trick is making sure we're balancing that cost against the cost of potential turnover, you know, of, of employees, and even a morale thing, the impacted, you know, productivity from a morale standpoint, et cetera, and impact of that turnover as well. So both points well made.
I, I recognize this as an important part of our benefit package. I just don't want it to be excessive, and, and especially in consideration of the other things we offer.
Yes, sir.
Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Item four, counsel. First and final reading of Resolution 23-2025. This is a resolution in consideration of a request for a closure of a portion of a public road in the City of Greer and to refer the road closure to the city attorney pursuant to City Ordinance 78-11. Mr. Grant?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'm going to leave Steve up there and just make him sweat for a minute, because I may throw him a curveball. But if you'll recall, when we began the process of road closure for Park, which this council will consider later in the meeting, we had to pass a resolution to kick off the process. Well, this is that part of the process for this section of Moore Street. So to get you a little bit familiarized with where we are, to the left is where the James Apartments are being built, and then the right-hand side, and what's circled there in red, is the section of Moore Street that this resolution would consider opening up. The reason that there's a request for closure on this is, is a couple, there's a couple reasons. One, we were approached by the South Carolina Department of Transportation and Norfolk Southern to begin some work on the, the arms for the railroad here, to move them, to make that turning, to eliminate the turning on to, for Moore onto Line Street, which would put a car, where Steve's pointer is, on the inside of the arm. So there, that, this was a safety initiative that was begun by SCDOT and Norfolk Southern. So in order to effectuate that properly, closing down Moore Street makes the most sense. The other benefit to this is that the city is engaged in the, we're applying for a quiet crossing designation, which would affect Line Street, Trade Street, School Street, and Able Street. And so as we continue to go through that process, this quiet crossing would include this particular portion of it. The good part is the cost that we would have, that the city would have borne for that, for any of the engineering and signalization, et cetera, on that intersection will now be borne both by SCDOT and Norfolk Southern. So it does save the city money when we go down the road with quiet crossings process, but it also immediately starts eliminating a safety concern at that intersection of Moore and Line. Steve, is there anything you want to add to that?
I would note that, yeah, when we close it, well, obviously, there's not going to be any cars coming up there anymore. But so, yes, to reiterate right now, if you pull up there and the arms go down, you're trapped between the railroad track and the arms, so that's not a good situation.
That's right.
All right.
Oh, yes, sir.
Your comments?
Oh, no, no, that's it. So again, this is the resolution that begins, so this council will take action on the resolution, which will begin the public notification period, and then there will be two readings of, of the closure that this council will consider.
Okay. Mr. Grant, you want to add anything to the conversation at this point, sir?
No, sir, other than you should have a plat there in your, in your packet, and it's the, the hatch portion is what will be closed.
So we need the resolution then to address item six, then, which is going to be the first reading on the, on the.
No, no, sir. Item six is actually the Park Street matter. So that's where the confusion may come in. This resolution is just for, just for Moore Street.
Just the Moore Street.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this begins that process very similar to what we're doing on six.
Okay, all right. Everybody clear on that at this point? So this is the first and final reading of Resolution 2023, I mean, excuse me, 23-2025. The resolution in consideration of the request for closure of a portion of the public road in the City of Greer and to refer to the road closure to the city attorney pursuant to the city ordinance. This is an action that we'd taken previously on these, the, what we'll address here just in, in a little while. With the purpose of discussion, we, we don't have a motion yet, do we? For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Go move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion or additional questions.
What would happen to that piece of property?
Right now, the plan is just to demo out the asphalt and plant it with grass.
Others?
So is, it's, it's in the railroad right away?
It is, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Andy, got a question, because we talk about situations like this, where we're doing improvements, I guess you could say, or closures, that would be considered kind of improvement for the, the good of the community. It kind of brings me back to the whole Bible Brook Drive Bridge situation, where we, we took it out, and we did some upgrades downtown in lieu of, of that, of that project. This, this particular location is in District 2. Explain to me again, if I get questions concerning this situation, how is it different? Why are we going this route? Could you, could you go through that one more time? So I'm 100% clear?
Sure. You're, you're asking for, I guess, to compare this particular instance?
Not necessarily compare, just to understand what, what we're going to do here, because it's going to impact the surrounding neighbors.
Sure, sure.
They're going to have questions.
Well, ideally, what it would do is provide a safer vehicular and, quite frankly, pedestrian experience for anybody that might use that section of Moore Street, taking a right north on the line. What it would do is it would, it would force the traffic back down that street, right? And I think, what is that, Second?
Second Street.
Second. It would go down Second right there and force the Victor Avenue, force folks to go down the Victor Avenue. I think the traffic counts down that section more fairly small anyway.
Oh, yeah.
But to answer your question, the function of that is purely out of safety. The good news is, is that unlike Bible Brook, it doesn't, there's no direct access onto Moore Street, no driveways are impacted, no adjacent city streets or, or state roads are, are, are impacted. So in this particular case, it's a pure function of safety and accessibility for both the folks that, that might have ordinarily used that won't be forced to potentially get caught behind that, behind that arm. And then in the long run, it would also benefit the city's application for a quiet crossings there, and it would keep the trains from blowing as they come through town on the Norfolk Southern line.
And does the land go to the owners, or does it stay at the city as right away?
It would maintain, it would maintain, it would stay, stay in the city's ownership. We don't, we're not, there's no plan in this particular time to quit claiming. But if we get through the, post the resolution, and we get into the ordinance component of this, that would be, that could be potentially part of the discussion. But in this particular case, I think it would behoove the city to maintain that section of right away.
Mr. Booker, the railroad didn't, they came to us first about this. That's how it started. And then it just, coincidentally, the quiet crossing was kind of being worked on as well, so it just kind of meshed.
It won't impact the other end of Moore Street, the other side?
Heading east, or the, or heading west? That, no, sir, it should not.
Now, just out of curiosity, why do we stop it at that intersection, not take it all the way up to the, the next railroad crossing? For that stretch of Moore Street?
All the way down Moore?
Not across, I'm talking about back towards.
Back east towards the port.
Yeah.
Well, quite frankly, that was really all that was necessary to make the, the changes for the, the arms, for the crossing gate, and it allowed Second Avenue to remain open for folks that might utilize Moore Street if they still want to go south on, on Line or into, onto Victor Avenue. So it did, it cut nothing off. It still provided a means of access.
Others? Questions? Comments?
Last question. Does the railroad have a good track record of holding up their end of the bargain on things like this?
Yes, sir. I think in this particular case, it, it certainly behooves them to have safer crossings. And, and at-grade crossings for railroads are notoriously problematic, and so anything that they can do to mitigate potential conflict with pedestrians or vehicles at these at-grade crossings, they're going to invest in, and it is in their best interest. So, yes, sir, I do fully anticipate Norfolk Southern coming through with this one.
That is an area where we've had several train accidents and people accidents, yeah.
There's been a couple in the last few years, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Last call. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Item five, counsel. First and final reading of Resolution Number 24-2025. This is a resolution approving the police department's use of 150th Anniversary Commemorative Badge for calendar year 2020. badge for calendar year 2026. We welcome our chief of policemen, Mr. Matt Hanby.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we bring before you tonight a resolution for your consideration to authorize the police department to, uh, wear and display the, uh, presented badge, as you see in the, uh, on the screen. Uh, this badge on the left side was, uh, located a handful of years ago from a community member, uh, here in Greer. So that badge, as we did our research, that, um, was worn and, and it was in service during the early part of the century of 1900s, probably around the 1920s era, at least that early. Uh, we did confirm that with a few historical photographs of some police officers from that era. And in honor of Greer's 150th anniversary during 2026, we propose that we wear a commemorative badge. It's basically a duplicate badge that has been produced. Um, as you can see, uh, that is a, an actual, um, reproduction there in the middle, uh, that we've been sent as a sample. And as you can tell on the far right picture, uh, the dates and indicating that it's a commemorative badge for, uh, that we would wear during 2026. So as you can see, the, uh, instead of it saying Greer, it says Greers, which, uh, I'm sure all of you are very well aware, that was the original name of our city before the, uh, the S was dropped. But we thought it would be appropriate to commemorate our history, to keep that S on this badge, and, uh, that would be our way to honor our city's history. Um, but since it does have that S, we thought out of an abundance of thoroughness, if you will, that we would, uh, seek council's authorization to make that our official badge with your authority. Happy to answer any questions.
Comes with a request from the chief. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Sounds like a, uh, an endorsement already, chief. So the floor is open for discussion or questions.
Chief, so this would, January 1st would be the first day that anyone wore it, December 31st, the last day that anybody wears it, kind of thing, is that the idea?
January 1st through December 31st, 2026, yes.
I'm, I'm very in favor of it. I get, I'm curious, uh, are there any requirements by law of what law enforcement badge has to show or specs or information?
No, we, we've not been able to find anything. I mean, just keep in mind, we'll still be driving police cars that say Greer Police, and our shoulder patch, uh, indicates Greer as well.
You don't have to have a number? Badge number?
No, sir, we don't have those currently, no.
Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing them. Council, item six is, uh, next before us. This is the first reading of the ordinance, Number 30-2025. This is the ordinance authorizing the closure of a portion of the public road in the city of Greer. Mr. Mayorman?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this, uh, is in, um, the first reading of the ordinance that, uh, this, you held the public hearing on earlier. This would be the closure of the portion of Park Street that you see, um, roughly circled here. We've got, uh, I think some more information in your packet as well, but this is the first reading of that ordinance. Um, I do believe the developer is here to answer any questions, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, specific to that closure, but, um, this is, we've met all the requirements of the code to, uh, bring this to you for first reading.
Are you prepared to answer questions and to address council in regards to that? All right. Um, at this point, um, let's, um, get any information from Mr. Grant that might be pertinent to the discussion, and we'll go from there.
Uh, at this time, I don't have anything to add, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that come up if I can.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just by way of reminder, um, this is a little bit of a unusual situation, and so we did, we did ask the developer, um, to make this request of council. This is not something that the city would have ordinarily, uh, brought to the attention of council, um, i- in a situation like this. However, given the situation, um, with the water line, we had to try and figure out a way to work with the developer and get creative on, uh, accomplishing both their needs, uh, for the project, but also, uh, minimizing impact both to anybody that might be driving on Park, um, but also to, uh, the folks that live on the Park Avenue townhomes. This was a request made by the developer to abandon this portion of Park Avenue, effectively privatizing it, which would allow the, uh, water line to be installed under Park, which would then be part of the red, the deed record, um, that there would be a water line under Park. So just from a background standpoint, this is one of those, and for lack of a better term, this is where governance becomes art and science. Uh, this is the art part of it, is the, um, trying to figure out the best way to help accomplish, uh, this economic development and, um, uh, initiative along with, um, providing the access to the existing residents and the future residents.
So counsel, indifference to the, the, the citizens along that road and, um, the, the issues that have been raised, uh, both in the, uh, first, in the public hearing and then again this evening. Uh, if you would, if you would provide information to council, anything that's new since the last time we talked, and, um, conversations that you may have had, um, that, uh, may move this discussion along for council, and appreciate you being here. I know, um, you and your associate have traveled up, um, from Atlanta on a, on a, on a busy week, and, uh, unfortunately, you just missed your plane by about 18 minutes, so.
Yeah, that's right.
I know a good hotel near here, so. But, uh, yeah, if you'll, uh, identify yourself, I'm, the floor is going to be yours.
Yes, sir. I'm, uh, Mike McCarthy, representative of the developer, live at 3801 North Dunbarton Street in Arlington, Virginia. Um, nothing's really changed since the last time I addressed council. Um, you know, I've continued to have conversations with, with Ms. DeVicks. I think there was some, um, you know, apprehension at, at first. I think we found a, a mutual understanding, uh, to how this closure would impact, um, her and, and, and that community. Um, and so I appreciate the open dialogue with her and appreciate council's, uh, consideration of, of this request. And I'm here to answer any, any questions.
Okay. If you'll just stay close by there somewhere, um, at this point, we'll need a, a motion in a second to, uh, open the floor.
So moved.
And a second. Ms. Albert? Okay. Uh, floor is open. Uh, questions, discussion?
Can you go back to the picture before, please?
Do we know from a design perspective what the street will look like after this is all done with? Cause right now, I was, I was over there kind of riding through construction, I mean, the, the street is, is tight and with townhomes high on both sides.
I don't have the plans, I can send you that, but yes, it's going to be widened, and I believe there's parallel parking, at least on one side, um, in the stretch that's going to, that's proposed to be, uh, closed. So it'll be widened with, uh, parallel parking.
So this section of Park Avenue will be open for the development, it just will not be open for the existing development? Is that what you're, is that what we're proposing? Is, I mean, if it becomes a private road in that scenario?
Yes, sir. The discussion right now is a gate in this vicinity, which would delineate the private section from the public section.
And so the development, they would, they could exit on Park and head towards the tracks and then go right or left on Moore Street?
Correct.
And, um, Mr. Dumas, there is, uh, egress, if I'm not mistaken, on Line Street as well, is that right? Um, we.
Right here.
There's for the, for the townhomes below there.
Or down here, yeah.
But not for.
That's right, not for the other side.
Egress on Great Street.
That's right. That's right.
So will that, will there be a, a, a stoppage at the bottom of Park Avenue? Will they still be able to go out that way? Down?
Right here.
Going down?
Nothing's changing down, there's, the stop signs and all are not changing down there.
No, you would not change that, you'd just deed them the top part of the road.
Yes, sir.
To achieve what they need.
Yes, sir.
Right, what's shown on the plat?
So the residents on Park would still be able to go up or down to leave their places?
I believe the requirement would be for a gate. There would have to be a gate there, but there's nothing that would require, they, the gate delineates, and you're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, but the gate delineates the difference between the public and private section. But the gate doesn't necessarily have to be closed to, so it wa, so Park, the, the privatized section of Park between Moore and, in the red, would still be open to through traffic, provided the gate was open.
All the way through?
All the way through, yes, sir.
The gate is just kind of symbolic?
The gate symbolizes that there is a, a separation between public and private.
That's a very narrow street, isn't it?
Actually, Park is being widened, it, all the way down.
It's being widened.
As part of this project.
It's been widened.
It is being widened, yes.
The entire street or just the?
All the way down.
Oh.
Or, excuse me, that.
This half.
Yeah.
I could, I'll be.
One half, is it?
I'll see what the plans.
One half of the road, right, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
The apartment side.
At the apartment side, that's right.
And when I rode through there and I saw their trashcan sitting out there, I'm wondering how does the, um, trash truck kind of get through there and get turned around to get back out?
So with the gates closed, and I live on Park Avenue, I gotta, I gotta go south.
You live on Park, if the gates closed and you live on Park, you're going to take a right, and that you're in those existing townhomes that Daniel have, do either go east towards Line or west towards Trade? So.
But this does keep traffic out of the development from coming down Park, and so there, there's no way to access the development from Park Avenue, correct? I mean, they, they can't come up that road and then go.
Closed, correct.
Right. So it keeps the apartment traffic off of Park Avenue and doesn't disturb the existing townhomes, correct?
Correct.
Where is this gate going to be located?
Basically right there at the P where Steve's got.
In the vicinity, right, you're near there.
Right there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Is it going to be?
But who determines whether it's going to be open or closed?
Oh, that's, that's the thing, it's a, it's a private gate, so we're, we would not require it to be closed, and I think that fire chief or the fire marshal's office would have some jurisdiction over accessibility if there is a concern.
So is the gate going to be on the upper part or on the lower part?
It would be on the lower part, so it would not be on the part that is closest to Moore Street, is the part.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying, is it going to be right, right there where your pointer was?
Right.
At the head of the existing Park Avenue residents?
It should be near where it says Park or the letter P in that vicinity.
Okay, what, I guess what I'm getting at is, if the gate was shifted upward, if there is some access to Line Street, the Park Avenue people could access there, right?
Well, like, you mean cut through the James Development?
Yeah. There's no access to Line from this parking lot.
There's.
It is down here.
Oh, it's way down there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
Okay, so Park Avenue will be open, but it'll be divided open. It'll be open down here and open up there, but not joined together?
Could be if the gate's closed.
The gate, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I think that's an important component in this, and this is what makes it, we're going to. No, I was going to say, I thi, I, I, I think there's actually, I, I, I think I know of at least one, and maybe, there may be more that, that exist now in, in some of our subdivisions, I know.
Well, I know it's closed up now with the construction going on, yeah. You can only go so far.
Well, no, but I mean, having a gate that dedicates the separation between the public and the private.
Is that going to be North Park and South Park? Is that how we're going to do?
No, it'll just be Park with a gate.
A closed park would be private if it had.
Yeah, well, I mean, the addressing was.
It would just be a private drive.
Yeah.
Well, I think I missed something, because I thought that a part of it was going to be closed off in order to get the water over to the apartments that they needed.
The, the water line will go under the road.
Yeah, yeah, but I thought that, that was the purpose, was to cut it off because of that, but it's not.
It is.
It is.
I mean, it's, it's, this is solely predicated on a utility service to that piece that was the old, um, baseball field.
And that can't be done any other way.
Well, it can be with a separate tap that comes off of Line Street at a $600,000 price tag.
No, I'm saying, we have to give them that road in order for them to.
The only other option, Mr. Uh, Mr. Bettis, thank you, that is a good question. The only, the other option is that, that this council grant them an easement, a private easement under the road. Okay, fine. If we went that route, Park Street would remain open as is, but there would be a private, non-recorded utility easement under the road. So in 20 days or 20 years, if there's roadwork being done or something along there, we've either got to have them put the water line in a steel box underground and put signage up that says, hey, there's water line underground, or risk damaging that line, which would, uh, disrupt water service for goodness knows how long for everybody that would live over there. This is, this is, again, this is not the best option.
Well, isn't that true of any road? I mean, you run the risk.
Typically.
Damaging water pipes anytime you do roadwork.
But at least there's, when their utility locates, it's on the plats, right? So we, there, there's, there's a record of the utility being, being, because it's a public utility.
Public utility.
It would be a public utility. In this particular case, it's a private utility going under public road, so it wouldn't show up on, on, on those plats. Is that a bad thing?
As long as nobody hits it.
As long as, as long as I hit, now, in, not to defer an issue, but we could all be not here when that problem happens. It could never happen.
Well, you could put proper markings.
Sure.
Just like pups does, you know?
And, and quite frankly, Mr. Bettis, we could require the developer to put it in, uh, you know, so if it's ever directional boarded, hit a, a steel box. I mean, that, we could do, we could take reasonable measures to require the developer protect the water line to mitigate that concern. Again, this is, this is why we wanted the developer to ask the question of council, because we, this, they're not great options. From a pure engineering and road maintenance standpoint, these are not the greatest options. However, in the art and science of how we do things, the science part is says, bad idea, just move on. The art part of it is, we've got a significant investment in our downtown, um, we're going to be, we've got re, existing residents that we want to protect and provide them, uh, a high quality of life. We've got future revit residents that we want to protect and provide a high, high quality of life. How do we balance those things? So it's either close the road or provide a private utility easement. We close the road, there's nothing that says the gate would remain shut, ever. And it would just still be a thoroughfare.
But we are at a point of design that we know what this will look like, or no? Like, where, where the gate will be, what the future improvements are going to look like? I guess it's just not fair to have the public hearing, and we're still kind of ambiguous at this level of, and we're going to be voting on a first reading. You know, it's not a lot of comfort on my end to support something that I really don't know what I'm voting on yet. Um, and also, are the, are the townhomes on the lower end, are the front doors facing the other townhomes, or are they facing towards, um, I guess you'd say, South Line Street? Because if my recollection is, is correct, the townhomes on Park Street are going to be facing each other, the front doors?
Correct.
And so that's a whole nother thing, where we're going to have parallel parking on that end that we're not even kind of talking about, because, as you're saying, cars can go through to South Line Street, but their front doors are facing each other on Park Street. So by essence, they're going to be, there's going to be a lot of tra, there's going to be traffic coming in and out that way, if I'm not, and I may be looking at this wrong, I don't have the, the drawings in front of me, but, um, I just don't have a level of comfort right now.
Mike? There's, there's no parallel parking on the, what would remain the public portion of Park Avenue. It would be, would it currently plan to be private section?
So there's no road improvements or widening down where the existing townhomes are? It'll still be narrow, and then when we get up to the Park Avenue where the red, the red line is, it flares out, is that what you're saying?
So we will widen on our side, um.
It's starting down here, isn't it?
20 feet plus the five-foot sidewalk. And, uh, empty areas, so we're widening and adding the sidewalk on our side of Park So we're widening and adding the sidewalk on our side of Park Ave. There's no room to widen on the other side.
And I'm not saying I'm against the idea. I just really wish I had more to, to digest at this level. Especially, you know, we had the petitioner here and she really doesn't have any more answers than what she has coming in.
It, it, yes, ma'am, you can come forward. And that's, it's legitimate to this conversation.
I, I do have a question for you. What, I, I, I didn't get a clear stance from you. The people that are living on Park Avenue, they, now, what is their stance? Do they want it or not?
Do they want the privatization?
Yes.
They want to see the developer be able to finish his project.
I'm sure of that.
And they understand the $600,000 cost that he was facing. They want to know that the street will be safe. And if this, if the city decides what's required, you may hear a little frustration in my voice. And that's because, for one, there, the Greer Engineering Manual is the one that addresses private streets. We have the ordinance about privatization. The only test in that ordinance is what's in the public interest. The request, when it was made, was for the developer's interest so they could finish their project, which is in the public interest. But the public interest has not been otherwise defined. In the Greer Engineering Manual, there's a definition of design standards for private roads. And it says that private road shall be limited to residential streets, usually connected on a cul-de-sac or a loop street, constructed as a cul-de-sac or loop street or combinations thereof, provided that the private road or road network does not allow through access between and among adjoining public streets. So the, I, I am an attorney by background. This is not my area. But when faced with this issue, what I did was I studied all of our ordinances, all of the planning and development ordinances, and Appendix A to the city's Code of Ordinances, which includes the reg, the Engineering Manual. And it seems that the engineering department really has a say. We're talking about public roads. Public roads are the surface of the road for the public to be able to have continuity of transportation.
Rather than the, rather than the lawyer's answer, could you just give me a stance on how the people on Park Avenue feel?
The last, the last discussion we had with residents and as a board was in favor of the gate if the city required a gate, okay? That's the, we had, because we have to go with the law. And that's the law. And as far as easements are concerned, when that issue was raised, I went back through the Engineering Manual, the Code of Ordinances, and the development ordinances. And there is no reference to an easement in order to put private water lines under a public road. And if you research just by going on the internet, the only, and I'm open-minded about the whole thing, but the only reference that I can find is to an easement that's given to the public utility to come in and have access when it needs to make repairs because they're impacting its public utility service. And, and here we are trying to prepare for a meeting on privatization of a road, which has taken me countless hours over the last few weeks. And then the idea of an easement is brought up only because I sent out a question to Mr. Mayorman. He answered it very quickly. I was leaving town to take care of an elderly relative in another state. And I got back from that last night. But all I had time to prepare and to prepare my homeowners to understand was what is privatization of a road? Our thought in the last discussion I started, but didn't have a chance to finish with my homeowners before I left town and, or to really discuss with Mr. McCarthy is, even if the, a gate is required, if there are measures to take that protects the safety of people driving down the road, the speed limit. So you may have a gate, but maybe the gate doesn't have to stay open. I mean, stay closed. Actually, the Fire Department told me, the Assistant Fire Chief who spoke with the Fire Marshal said that there's absolutely no problem from their perspective with the gate being closed because they can get it in and out for any kind of emergency service. The Spartanburg County Development Code says that a private road between pub, two public roads must be gated. Does that apply to Greer? No, but, but we have to ask ourselves, why is the requirement in our traffic manual, our engineering manual, saying that you can't use a private road as an access between two public roads? And the member of the engineering staff that I was able to reach towards somewhere between three and five in this afternoon, I asked him, I said, where, what is the reason for this requirement? Because when we can understand the reason, then we can better understand what's the right thing in this situation. And the reason had to do with continuity of public streets, so there's no confusion. It had to do with clarity in terms of who's responsible for what and maintaining what. And it had to do with reducing, I'm gonna block on the, the, the technical term he used, but it had to do with the amount of traffic that would flow out of the apartments and, and then down to the private section so that the homeowners in that section would not have to deal with an undue increase in traffic.
Well, let me just say, if you're looking for consistency between engineering ordinances, or if you're looking for a rhyme or reason why they've written them, you can forget about that. They, they vary everywhere, as, as I'm sure Karim can tell you. If, if y'all are good with the gate, I'm good with the gate. That's, that's my stance. If y'all aren't good with the gate, I'm not good with the gate. So that's why I ask you this directly. What is the stance of the people on Park Avenue?
Well, we are fine with gates.
There you go.
But, but we are also sensitive to the developer's concern that its residents, or some of its residents, if there was a controlled flow of traffic, we could go with a controlled flow of traffic that slows down their exit and keeps it slow and manageable so our people can still get in and out of their driveways.
Well, I believe if I lived on Park Avenue, I would want it gated because it solves all traffic problems through there. And if I want to leave, I can come down and go either way. And you can park on the street and be fine.
I think what he's saying, if he was, if he lived where you did, he would prefer that the gate be there because it's so much easier to come and go. You don't have to worry about somebody flying through there from here.
That was where I left it with the board and the homeowners right before I went to Ohio. And I just got back. And we have not been able to readdress the issue, but that was our last conclusion. However, I do understand Mr. McCarthy, when he told me that, he said, because I, we talked about safety. And I said, for our people, when the gate's closed, well, that means that we'd have to go down to Marshant. And if we wanted to go into town, we'd have to take a left on Line. And that can be a dicey left turn even at Marshant and Line. And, and Mr. McCarthy pointed out that, well, for their residents, if they went down more towards Line Street, it would be an even dicier, unsafe situation for them to take a left because the railroad tracks are right there and it's kind of a blind hill. There's, there is a lot of thought that the city needs to put into addressing traffic safety when it makes a decision on this.
If I were going downtown, I would go to Marchant Street and take a right and get Trade.
Well, that's what we'll do too. But do remember that that particular intersection has three to four streets all coming together.
I understand.
But that is the only safe way to go. However, if we, we had to walk that way, we would not have sidewalks down Daniel Street. But Mr. McCarthy has been in discussion with me about helping to create continuity between our sidewalks. Another thing that we have really appreciated. Any other questions?
Not at this point.
I'm done.
But, yeah. If you want to stay close, that's fine, but not at this point.
Okay, I'm close.
Mr. Mayorman?
Yes, sir.
Can we memorialize the, the gate in our agreement with Mr. McCarthy's company? We absolutely can. And between first and second reading, Mr. McCarthy and I can certainly work some stuff out. There's, there's actually language in there that requires TM, TMG to compensate the city for that portion of the closed road anyway. So we would need to work that out between first and second reading. But yes, sir, we, we can, we can memorialize that discussion.
How... How far along are you or not at this point to give us any kind of sketch or idea what, what we've talked about in terms of what the road's gonna look like and that sort of thing? Is, is that something that we could potentially see in a rough format? At our, our, our last meeting this year, at the one that'll be November the, I mean, December the...
The ninth. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, the final plat has been approved for this and which would have the details that this council's asking for on what would be the privatized piece of Park. So if you'd like to see that, I think we can provide that. If I'm, we have that, yeah.
Does that give us any detail about the gate and what it looks like?
Just sketches of where the gate is.
So it's, it's decorative, I assume? Is, it's not just two pieces of metal holding a bar up? It's gonna be brick or stucco or something?
The same brick that's on, or similar brick that's currently on, on the building would be.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And that gets you the water you need?
Yes.
It settles your issues. Yes.
All right, counsel. Further discussion. I will ask that we have more information...
Yes, sir.
From both of y'all for second reading? Something to, to take a look at and...
Yeah, that'd be awesome, yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
It seemed like we got some consensus. So I'll ask my questions after meeting or later.
Okay. Final call? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bess?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Did you, oh, I thought you had left for just saying, thank y'all for the discussion tonight. That's what we needed to move forward on this. Appreciate it. Counsel, item number seven, first reading of ordinance number 31-2025. This is an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property and a temporary easement in certain real property located inside the city of Greer. Mr. Grant?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. SC DOT has been studying this intersection at Subur and Chick Springs for a couple of years or more, and they've decided to improve the intersection. They plan to signalize this intersection by widening Subur and adding left-turn lanes on Subur, adding crosswalks, and of course, traffic signals. The SC DOT needs to acquire additional right-of-way from the city as we own the corner where the new fire station is located. And that is in this corner here. And the little gray triangle you see is what they need to purchase, the right-of-way. They need to purchase 0.029 acres. DOT has had this property appraised and it appraised for $14,458. Additionally, DOT is requesting a temporary construction easement, changing drawings here, to allow the project to be constructed. You see the gray strip along the, the right-of-way? They've offered $3,853 for temporary use of this construction easement. DOT will replace any items that are disturbed during the project, such as landscaping, sidewalk, or streetlights. The proposed schedule per the DOT is to go out for bids in April 2026, start construction in summer of '26, and complete it in one year or less. The Fire Department staff, engineering staff, and the legal staff and administration have all reviewed the plats and the appraisal documents and the other legal documents and are satisfied with the terms of the offer and the project. Therefore, staff is requesting counsel approval to proceed with the sale of this 0.029 gray triangle you see here. This property, selling that to the DOT for road right-of-way and granting the temporary construction easement, what you see in the strip here, for this intersection improvement project. And I'll try to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion, please.
A move.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Floor's open for questions. Do we have a schedule, I mean, when they're gonna start this? I mean, can... Schedule of...
Yeah, it'll go out for bids in April and they're supposed to start in the summer.
Oh, okay.
They said that they're gonna order all the signals and there's a lag, big lag time for that. And they wait till those actually hit the yard before they're gonna break ground. So it may look like nothing's going on, but they're waiting on the signals to be, to hit the yard.
Now, they went from a traffic light to a, they were talking about doing a roundabout. And then they went back to the traffic light once.
Yes, ma'am. Right-of-way is a big deal here, as you know. Very limited right-of-way. There's just not enough for a roundabout.
Turning lanes will solve a lot of the problem, no doubt.
Just getting to the point, though, that this is gonna be finished.
You might have to wait through two or three lights, but it'll get you there.
Yeah. Others? Questions?
I remember we purchased this property where the fire station was, what, three or four years ago?
Been about four years, yes, sir.
And I remember that right-of-way was an issue during our discussion. And that was a holdup for this Chick Springs project. So it's nice to see where our, those investments we made, now we're finally seeing those improvements being done. That's, that's really awesome.
And to some degree, we had prepared for this. We knew that this would happen. And so Mike and his, his staff really worked hard on, through design, to ensure that there'd be minimal impact to the work that we'd already done out there.
I don't believe there's gonna be any landscaping, make some lawn disturbance, but that's gonna be about it?
I think they'll have to move the sidewalk a few feet. Probably move the sidewalk back a couple of feet and probably the streetlights. But they're gonna, they're gonna pay for all that.
They're gonna take care of that, yeah. Right. Others? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bess?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, that concludes our regularly scheduled meeting. Counsel will adjourn into executive session here shortly. So I'll entertain a motion that we move to executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter pertaining to the city administrators allowed by State Statute Section 30-470A1.
Comes, comes as a motion to hear a second.
Second.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bess?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Mike, I'm making a request right now when we do the retreat. You go back to your little graphs showing property taxes and millage and all that, comparing the municipalities.
We've already got Chris working on it.
Good. Because it was, it's real hard to understand for most people, but that's a good example of it. That's a good way to show it. Thank you. Counsel, in executive session this evening, we have discussed a personnel matter pertaining to the city administrators allowed by State Statute Section 30-4-70A1. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
Say a move.
Second. And a second. Any further business this evening in regards to our meeting?
Make a motion to allow the mayor to negotiate the 2026 employment contract with the city administrator.
Have a motion and a second?
Second.
Ms. Duncan?
Wait a second. Yeah, I have some comments to add on. So I'm not going to.
Floor is open, okay.
Yes, so thank you. I am not going to support the adjustment of the contract to the city administrator tonight. You know, typically, we go into executive session, we discuss legal, contractual, and personnel matters. And typically, we don't come out and make comments about personnel, but this is very different. Andy leads our city ultimately, you know, with the mayor, and so I just think it's important to reference this. I want to start by saying Andy's a good friend of mine. I go into my office every day and I laugh. He played in my golf tournament with me this year. He's up on the wall, and, you know, we had a really good time, and I've enjoyed his company and being with him, you know, and serving here in the city. He's got a tough job. We talked about this tonight. He's, we budgeted right now for over 400 employees. The city's doubled in size in the last several years, and he's got a very difficult job where he's maintaining relationships with staff, stakeholders, the public and council. And to safeguard that relationship with all of them, here are some of the things that I'd like to, you know, suggest that you focus on as you continue to develop as a city administrator. On the staff side, I think council, this is just my opinion, needs to hear from the department heads again. I think we need to get them back up here on a regular basis to hear about the struggles and the challenges that they're experiencing, and we can give feedback on that. And just as important, the public has a chance to hear it and to say, I'm good with what you're saying, or I've got some feedback for you, and maybe you should consider these items. So that's what I'd say on the staff side. On the stakeholder side, we've got to figure out a way to mend the fences with Assist Organization, CPW. I think they're going through some growing pains with the fact that the city's growing. They've got, from what I understand, some water treatment issues that they're going to be facing in the future, and sewer issues that they're going to be facing in the future, and how to treat all of that, and we're going to have to figure out a way to work with them and work together to keep moving forward. The chamber's in a regrowth phase right now. I think we have to pull alongside them and figure out the best way we can partner with them as a city, and to help them to continue to grow and to thrive, and support that business community, and also not to forget about the Partnership for Tomorrow, the former Partnership for Tomorrow that's now Greer Moves, to make sure we're engaging with them and getting feedback as we continue to go forward. The next piece of that's the public. And yes, I'm a big boy, and I voted for the 14-mill increase, and ultimately, the taxpayers decided that's, they were not in support of that, and they've removed me from office. But I do believe we could have structured the debt differently, we could have slowed down on that process, and we could have taken it in more palatable chunks over time, instead of grouping it all into one, and I hope that we'll be more considerate of that and the public, and to engage them further in the future. And on the council side, I really hope that we'll go back to the dot exercise, the exercise where we put everything up on the wall and say, these are the priorities of the police department, these are the priorities of the fire department, communications, whoever it is, and we say, each council member gets a vote and wants to see these specific things within their district, and we can collectively have that conversation again to say how we're strategically going to move forward. I really want to see that read adopted by council. Obviously, now, I'm not going to be in this seat anymore, I don't have a say-so over this, but this is just to safeguard the existing council members before, because I believe that experience matters in these seats, and you're losing two council members, 16 years experience, 16 years experience, they're not going to be here, and having to replace them with very green, very new people, and they will be just like all the members of council that are sitting right here, right now. When they start, they won't know, they won't have the information that we have, and it's going to be a very challenging process as they come onboard and they learn and they grow. And so I hope you'll be mindful about keeping your seated council seated, and giving them the right guidance to be able to do that and to serve at the highest capacity moving
Thank you.
We need to vote to come out of executive session. We took the motion, but we didn't vote.
We didn't vote on the motion to come out of executive session?
We have a motion, but we did not vote to come out.
Okay. Ms. Duncan, to come out?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Betis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Okay. You made a motion, will you repeat it, please?
Make a motion to allow the mayor to negotiate the city administrator's employment contract for 2026.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any further comments or discussion at this point? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
No.
Mr. Betis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
The discussion, yes. This is on Councilman Hopper's motion about the employment contract. For the discussion, yes.
We already discussed it. This is, you're voting to give him the ability to improve the contract or to keep it as it is?
It's not a, oh, it's not a discussion, it comes back? Okay, I'll vote no. I'll say no.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, that concludes the evening. Stand adjourned.